Just waiting for the last few to settle and then we can start. Good morning fellow councillors and welcome to our new office here as councillors at this hour AGM. Congratulations to all of you on being elected. As you can see we have somewhat unusual circumstances this morning and so there are just one or two things that I'd like to ask you to help us with. Firstly, I must say to you that if you wish to speak, you press the right-hand button, the little red stripe comes on and then you speak into the microphone while sitting down, unlike the normal council arrangements. You can speak while sitting down. Beyond about halfway and because you're in rows, I can't see who's who in our zoo today. And I didn't bring my binoculars, I'm sorry, I forgot those. So if you wish to speak, I'm going to ask you to stand and wave a bit of paper. If I haven't identified you or Marge hasn't identified you, Caroline will probably go down the corridor and get your name and then once we've noted that you want to speak, you can sit down again and then we'll call you when we get to that point for you to speak and then you should just speak into the microphone while sitting down. So don't be afraid to stand up, wave to me so that I can see who you are. All right. Now, as far as outgoing announcements, outgoing chairman's announcements are concerned, I don't really have much to say at this stage for reasons that become apparent. Maybe I'll be able to say them under item seven. But one sad noteworthy event that I attended, which I, in April, which I felt I should mention here, was when I went together with the Lord Lieutenant of Hampshire to lay a wreath on behalf of the county in memory of His Royal Highness the Duke of Edinburgh below the bronze of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth in the Great Hall in Winchester. We were accompanied by the Leader, the Chief Executive and the Sheriff of Hampshire. Subsequently, the Leader, Chief Executive and myself signed a letter of condolence which we sent to Her Majesty. Now, under apologies for absence, I have only one. I have an apology from councillor Alex Crawford. So we move on then to item two, which is the County Council Election Returning Officers report for noting and that is from the Chief Executive. Chief Executive, are you just going to say we shall note it, shall we? Okay. So we're all noting that. And that's on page five through to page eight. Good. We come now to the election of the chairman for the county council and so I must request the Chief Executive as the proper officer to call for nominations which are to be seconded and with all propositions being put to a vote. Chief Executive.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So I'm duly inviting nominations for the role of chairman of Hampshire County Council for the municipal year 2021 to 2022. Are there any nominations, please?
I would like to nominate councillor Mel Kendall as leader of the council as chairman.
Thank you. Are there any seconders to that, please?
Chief Executive, I would like to second that nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much Deputy Leader. Are there any other nominations please members? In which case, I'm not sure we need to put that to the vote, do we? I think it's a single nomination. Sorry? Okay. Are members happy to agree the nomination of councillor Kendall as chairman of the county council? Thank you very much indeed members. Congratulations councillor Kendall.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much indeed. Item four, declarations of interest. All members who believe they have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at this meeting must declare that interest and having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5 of the county council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is being discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regard to part five, paragraph four of the code, whether such interest should be declared and having regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it's appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. You may declare interests now or at the point in time when we reach the item on the agenda. The minutes. Item five on the agenda, refer to the agenda page nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, yep, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And twenty is where I sign. All comfortable with the minutes of the last meeting? There is a hand going up? Yes, could you stand and wave your paper because I can't see otherwise?
Apologies Chairman, just like to, item five, page thirteen, where the vote was cast fifty-two in favour at the bottom of the page. My name is actually Derek Mellor, I've been referred to again as David Mellor. I do not support Chelsea, nor am I in the House of Lords. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. I apologise on behalf of whoever needs to apologise. Councillor Derek, but I still can't see you, but I did see a hand waving. Oh, there you are, okay. Yeah, okay. Apart from the Diricks and the Davids getting themselves corrected, anybody else? Fine, then I will sign those minutes. Fine. Then I will sign those minutes. Everyone okay? Good. We're on item six now, the appointment of the vice-chairman. I need to call for nominations which are to be seconded and put to the vote if necessary.
Chairman, I would like to propose councillor Marge Harvey.
Seconders?
Mr Chairman, I'd like to second that nomination. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations for the post of vice-chairman? Are you all agreeable that councillor Harvey become vice-chairman of this council for this year? Say please, yes, agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Congratulations, councillor Harvey. So item seven on the agenda then, on my announcements as chairman. So here we go. Somebody wants me to ask councillor Mellor to turn off the microphone. It's the other button, I think. Okay. Right. Members, honourable aldermen, ladies and gentlemen, officers of the council, colleagues. As I said last year, it's with a deep sense of responsibility and honour and of course pleasure that I accept your nomination to serve as chairman of Hampshire County Council for a second year. Thank you for the support you have given me during the last year and for the trust you have placed in me again for this forthcoming year. May I thank the leader, councillor Humby, sorry, the leader councillor Keith Mans. We've got the leader thing wrong twice this morning. But we've got the right Keith anyway, but at that length. Thank you Keith and Deputy Leader Rob Humby for proposing and seconding me. This is my twenty-fifth year as a county councillor, along with one or two others in the room. And that is a long time, as my long-suffering supportive wife Lynne will tell you. But I would like to say thanks to all of my councillor colleagues with whom I have served over the years, many of whom have now retired. Also, I would like to thank the chief executive and his staff for the comfort they give us as councillors due to their excellence, as indicated by the numerous awards and honours bestowed upon them and this council, and our thanks go to them. In particular, I would like to say a few words about John Coughlin, who retires shortly after his very successful tenure as chief As head of paid services, the chief executive is responsible for managing the authority's overall annual budget of 2.1 billion and a workforce of around 37,000, including staff in over 500 Hampshire schools, and for delivering services to 1.4 million people across the county. John joined Hampshire in 2005 as its first director of children's services to oversee the integration of education and children's services and children's social care services into the current social services department. Something noteworthy happened in 2007. You may recall there was a case which has become infamous as the baby pee case in Haringey, when a baby died and social services were implicated there. It's a long time ago now, but at that time, the then Secretary of State, Ed Balls, called upon John, pulled him out of Hampshire, put him into Haringey to sort out the mess that was there, which John of course did in his quiet way very successfully. That night or the next night, I can't remember when, when Ed Balls appeared on television, he announced to the world that he had appointed John Coughlin to run Haringey, either I think the social services section or the council, I can't remember which. Which came as a bit of a shock to the rest of us in Hampshire. I was deputy leader at the time and thought, well, there goes a bloke we just appointed who we thought was pretty good. Can't believe this. Anyway, it turned out that Ed Balls had jumped the gun and it was in fact all balderdash. And so then in 2008, unsurprisingly, he was awarded a CBE in recognition for his work in children's services, helping to improve the outcomes of children both locally and And since then, we and in particular John, has been utilised by Whitehall on a number of occasions to help correct things that have not gone quite so well in other councils. He was appointed to the post of chief executive in 2015 following a national search. It was my pleasure to be on the appointment panel that unanimously appointed him. And at our last council meeting, I did extol his virtues in leading the team so well during the COVID period. I did not know then that he was about to announce his retirement. So that came as a bit of a surprise to me. It went shortly after that meeting it was announced. My comments at that time were not intended to be valedictory and the good things I said about John were in no way some sort of retirement thanks or hint. But John, you have been kind to staff and members alike. You've been so helpful and so wise. And I know that Madeline has been a great support to you over these many years. But John, I speak for all of us when I now wish you and Madeline the very best in the years ahead and a very happy retirement. And after item seven, sorry, after the leader's announcements, we'll ask John to say a few words. Now, this last year, for most of us, we have been confined to our homes, but we're luckier than many others because for many of us living in Hampshire, there could be no better place to be. Hampshire is such a beautiful county. The hills, the dales, forests, coastlines, two national parks, and the coastline of the New Forest, including the Solent and the views across Christchurch Bay to the very white cliffs of the Isle of Wight. And the Needles, its lighthouse, all a daily reminder to me of how fortunate we are. The changing sea colours are amazing as the sunlight catches the ripples when the wind blows across the tides. But I must still remind you again that the sea hides a terrible underwater morass of plastic affecting our sea life and threatening our health as the plastic microbes enter the food chain through our seafoods. As a county, we have been at the forefront of household waste disposal, recycling plastics and converting non-recyclables, including plastics, to energy in our various plants. But we need to do even more and I hope that we can find similar solutions for commercial plastic waste. And this brings me to my continuing theme for the year ahead. As we emerge so well from this pandemic as a county and as a nation, I hope this brings about a change in the wasteful way we take for granted our resources and the effect it has on our retirement, on our environment. So my theme for the year ahead is again for a cleaner, greener Hampshire led by the county council with its huge resources. And in particular, I want to encourage the use of clean energy wherever we can and to continue to reduce our carbon emissions, improving our air quality until finally we reach the nirvana of carbon neutrality. As a county council, we are at the forefront of keeping the fabric of local communities strong and cohesive. And it is right that we remind ourselves about the contributions, the contribution our council makes throughout Hampshire. I'm concerned that many of our young people have not been able to partake fully in the excellent music services we offer through children's services. I hope this year will be different for them and that we can all attend their concerts again to show our appreciation for their talents and hard work. I will continue to strive to uphold our values and to hope to make a stronger connection where needed with other bodies. So I commend all the work that we as an authority do. I am conscious that as the chairman of the county, there is a need for engagement in all civic activities and duties. I will continue with our ambition to be seen as an effective and practical authority striving for the good of our fellows. Now, finally, it is with sadness that I record that former county councillor, alderman, John Waddington passed away this month. John represented the Ringwood division from 1997 to 2005. John had a distinguished career in the insurance industry and was an excellent councillor both here and in the New Forest, more concerned with getting things done than with party politics. His quiet, courteous gentlemanly mannerisms endeared him to all who knew him. When he decided to retire, I was disappointed as I felt that he had so much still to give. But he said he wanted to spend time with his grandchildren who were growing up fast then. So he was first and foremost a family member. And my thoughts today are with his family. I mentioned that he passed away this month, that was wrong, he passed away last month. So I shall pause at this point for those of you who wish to speak in honour of John Waddington. Are there any? Councillor Chigman and then councillor Glenn.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. If I may just say a couple of words, because John was executive member for culture and communities, or I think we still call it recreation heritage in those days, and I was his shadow. And we actually got on remarkably well, given our politics were very different, so much so that I'd actually kept in touch with him ever since, right up to last Christmas. We always exchanged Christmas cards. He's usually had a little note in it, very politely in a conservative way, bemoaning the cuts to the department that he had led, me always saying back, you got out of it at the right time, and him generally agreeing. And I think you're right, Chairman, he certainly enjoyed his retirement. But I remember him as a councillor here as being probably one of the very best councillors on this county that I've known in, in over 36 years of service. He really cared for the department. He fought for it in a very quiet and dignified way, but you knew that if he wanted something, he would have done his research, he knew his facts, probably better than whoever he was trying to persuade. And he generally got his way as a result. He was greatly respected, a gentleman of the old school. And I'm very, very sorry to hear of his passing because he left a legacy in culture and communities in this county of which he and the county can be very proud. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Chigman. Councillor Glenn?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and congratulations on your second year. Well deserved. I hope you have a more interesting one than last. It is not often that I have a chance to agree with councillor Chigman, which won't do my career any good, but he's absolutely right about the character of John Waddington. He was part of that great intake of 1997, which you, Chairman, also were a member, like myself, and Alexis McIlroy. If I've missed anybody, I apologise, but that's the few who still remain from that intake. He was an absolute gentleman to deal with. He was wonderful to talk to. He was a great cabinet member. He absolutely adored his division. And he did inform us all that he did have back problems. And it really impressed me that he was able to get in his office his own chair, specially designed chair, paid for by the public purse, I understand. I've been trying to get mine ever since then and it hasn't appeared. But I live in hope. It's quite right, I'm terribly sad that he has died because when great councillors leave the council, you always hope they're there in the background taking a big interest in what we do, basically ringing us up and saying so-and-so's got it wrong, why don't you change his or her mind. So I'll be talking to you later, leader. So ladies and gentlemen, we've lost a great friend and we think of his family. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this moment? No, then I'm going to ask you to observe our tradition in these meetings, and that is to stand with bowed heads for a moment of silence in memory of councillor Waddington. That concludes item seven. We move on to item eight, which is the election of the leader of the council. And I call for nominations, let's hope we get the right Keith this time, which are to be seconded and put to vote. So nominations for leader of the county council.
Mr Chairman, thank you. I would like to nominate councillor Keith Mans to the position of leader of the county council. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Mr Chairman, I'd like to second that nomination as for councillor Mans as leader of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. If when you speak, you could please announce your name, it will help because we can't really see all that well, as I said earlier. It's councillor Widdesley. Thank you. Now, I call upon the leader to confirm the members of his cabinet and then to provide such report as he may wish to bring to this council. I'm sorry, have I done something wrong? Oh, sorry, are there any other nominations? Would there be any other nominations? Officially, are there any other nominations? Are you all agreed?
Agreed.
That is unanimous. Good to see support from all parties. Okay, an anticipation of that, and I'm sorry that I anticipated it. Would you now like to announce your cabinet and also such words as the council may receive from you?
Thank you, Chairman. I will announce the names of my cabinet before I give my report. Councillor Rob Humby, deputy leader and executive lead member for economy, transport and the environment. Councillor Steve Reid, executive member for performance, human resources and partnerships. Councillor Russell Oppenheimer, executive member for highways operations. Councillor Jan Warwick, executive member for climate change and sustainability. Councillor Roz Chad, executive lead member for children's services. Councillor Liz Fairhurst, executive lead member for adult services and public health. Councillor Edward Heron, executive member for recreation, heritage and rural affairs. And councillor Steve Foster, executive member for commercial strategy, estates and property. And that completes my cabinet, Chairman. Chairmen and councillors, welcome back to our first county council meeting not held online for fifteen months. Councillor Kendall, councillor Harvey, congratulations on being re-elected chairman and vice-chairman respectively. After a quiet first year, I hope the coming year will be a bit busier. I would like to start by thanking councillors for re-electing me as leader. It is an honour to serve the county in this privileged position, and I will continue to carry it out to the best of my ability. Along with my cabinet, I will work steadfastly to ensure the highest outcomes for all residents across this wonderful county. I would like to thank Hampshire residents for continuing to put their trust in the Conservative group for supporting us through another successful election victory in Hampshire. I would also like to congratulate all councillors from all parties for their re-election or election for the first time to this county. And I would also like to commiserate with those that didn't make it past the winning post, in particular from my group, councillor Charles Chowdhury and councillor Judith Gryevsky. Judith is a particular personal loss, because she was a highly effective cabinet member during a period where her profile was very high because of the pandemic. Despite the pandemic, I'm pleased that the county council elections ran smoothly, and I'd like to thank all of the staff in the district and borough councils and the county council for their contribution in this process. These were extremely complicated elections to administer, and the officers involved deserve great credit for the way they worked quietly but skillfully to support democracy. The county council's priority throughout the pandemic has to have a clear sight of the aim, which was to reduce and stop the virus, to do so as a team involving all parties in both the public, private and third sectors, and to help each other shortly to keep Hampshire safe. I'm pleased to see a continued decrease in the number of cases in Hampshire, although of late with the Indian variant, that has come to a halt. This has been combined with the strong progress of the NHS vaccination programme, and it does give us reason for hope. However, we must all continue to follow the rules to keep ourselves, our loved ones and our communities safe. We are now enduring some new freedoms and equally await the government's announcement with regards to the roadmap for easing further. However, sitting here today in the Ageas Bowl, rather than the historic setting of the council chamber in Winchester, is a pertinent reminder that the virus is still with us. I'm thankful to all county council officers for their continued hard work and dedication, supporting the daily business of the authority while managing the additional responsibilities due to the pandemic. The pandemic has clearly had a major impact on our already constrained finances, a consequence of the growing demand for vital social care for vulnerable children and adults, and against a backdrop of rising inflation and reducing funding from government. In the face of these very difficult economic circumstances that all councils face, this administration's overriding objective is to maintain Hampshire as a successful and a prosperous county, supporting post-support and supporting post-support for the most vulnerable in our communities, with a commitment to deliver high-performance services and a desire to maintain council tax amongst the lowest of any county in England. I ought to add that I continue to believe the best way forward for Hampshire is the two-tier model of local government. And I will work very hard with districts and boroughs to ensure that we gain efficiencies from the work we do to support the communities we serve. Having said that, if the government have decided they want unitary authorities, and I hope they will be very clear one way or the other on this, when the White Paper is published, the latest date being now the autumn of this year, that the only unitary model I think that will work for Hampshire is for the whole of the county. I say this because any savings we might make by that model will be completely wiped out if we have to disaggregate services that we already provide throughout the county. I think it would be even more stupid to do that, bearing in mind that at last the National Health Service are talking about boundaries for the new ICSs to correspond with the boundaries of county councils. So at the very time the NHS is moving in what I would think the right direction, it would be not sensible for us to move in the opposite direction. I also believe that if we are going to secure our finances in the future, the present government needs urgently to sort out social services. Three separate administrations, Labour, the Coalition and now Conservatives, have all said they are going to do that. I hope it is the administration that my party supports that will actually now get on and do the job, because our ability to provide other services to our constituents, to the people of Hampshire, to a large extent depends upon social services for the young and the old being sorted out. The other matter that also needs to be sorted out is business rates for retailers. I think this particular tax is outdated. It is not the tax for either the present or the future. I believe we need a more equitable form of taxation for businesses, which includes online ones as well as our shops in the high street, who are a distinct disadvantage under the present system. So I hope again the government will seriously consider changing that system to put our shops in our local towns on an equal footing with online retailers. Let me turn briefly to climate change and the environment. I was delighted to hear what the chairman said on this subject. I totally agree with his remarks. This county remains ahead of the curve when it comes to tackling the climate change challenge. We were one of the first, if not the first, to sign up to the climate emergency. And I believe we will solve this problem in the long term by focusing on three things. One is global emissions, not just CO2 but others as well. Secondly, on air quality, and I hope the introduction of electrical forms of transport will make a big stride in cleaning up the air we breathe. And thirdly, protecting the natural environment. We set our course some two, just under two years ago, after we signed the climate emergency, by engaging with the Carbon Trust to work out an accurate way of determining what our emissions were. Having done that, and having come up with a plan, we are now, a plan that we put together just under a year ago, the first annual monitoring report of that plan will come to my cabinet very shortly. And we're now entering the stage where we have to put that plan into action and see change on the ground. The targets we have are for climate neutrality by 2050, but equally, we have to build resilience, allowing for a two-degree rise in temperature during the next few decades. And that is a real challenge for us. Over the next year, the county council will continue to embed climate change in everything we do, challenging ourselves to innovate and create solutions to reduce emissions and build resilience on our own estate and in the wider Hampshire area. This is something we can all work towards achieving. As I've said before, our targets should be challenging but achievable. And I believe the challenge that we've set ourselves is just that. Before I finish my report, I just want to add a few tributes. First of all, I want to add a few remarks about the sad death of the Duke of Edinburgh. His Royal Highness, the Prince Philip, Duke of Edinburgh, passed away, as you know, on Friday the ninth of April. He will be remembered with great fondness and affection for the enduring example of duty and service he set for every one of us. And I believe his lasting legacy will be the Duke of Edinburgh's award. I met him personally on a number of occasions when I was chairman of the Air League, and he was our patron, a post he filled for over fifty years. I would also like to add my condolences to the family of Honorary Alderman John Waddington, who passed away last month. I didn't know him well, but by coincidence, his son and my daughter both live in the small village of Moldon in central Victoria in Australia, and both our grandsons know each other well. Finally, before I finish, I would just like to add a few remarks about our retiring chief executive. John, as far as I'm concerned, has done a tremendous job. I first got to know him when I took over as lead member for Children's Services. He was running a highly successful department, which achieved great results in the form of an outstanding recommendation by Ofsted, one of only two for upper-tier counties in this country. And I learnt a lot about children's services from him, and as the chairman has said, that knowledge has spread out well beyond the county and has benefited many youngsters right across England where he's been asked to give advice and support. More recently, I've worked very closely with him as chief executive, particularly during the last year and during the pandemic. I have to say, working with John has been a delight. We're a tight team, we like each other, we share everything with each other, and as a result, I would argue that the way we have tackled the pandemic in Hampshire reflects very, in a very strong way, with the way John works. As I say, it's been a great pleasure working with him. I think with his team, we've achieved something in Hampshire that hasn't been true across the country, and therefore I'd like to thank him personally for everything he's done for the county and for me personally. Chairman, that completes my report.
Thank you, leader. Before we go on to deputations, are there any other members who would like to say a few words relating to our retiring chief executive? So councillor Collett.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Adrian Collett, deputy leader of the Liberal Democrat Group. And can I congratulate you and councillor Harvey on your re-election? I think the way you have chaired the council meeting during a very difficult period via teams has been exemplary, and thank you for your competence in the way you've handled that. Chairman, I won't repeat a lot of the things that have been said about John already, but I'd like to give the perspective of someone who's been around for a very long time. I believe I am the longest-serving county councillor. Some people tell me that makes me father of the house.
Yes.
But, yes, in that time, I've known quite a few chief executives. Probably not as many as the Queen has known prime ministers, but a chief executive is a fairly permanent role, or it feels that it is. So to actually look back and see that, obviously, we have a new chief executive, will be recruited soon, and we have John. Before him, we had Andrew Smith. Before Andrew, we had Peter Robertson, and some of you will remember Peter, I'm sure. Before Peter, we had Robin Hodgson, and before Robin Hodgson, we had Keith Robinson. And I've known all of those during my time. But, Chairman, when in life you come to the time to make a decision to retire, it's a very big decision to make, as I'm sure even those who have not retired yet will appreciate. And to know that John had made that decision, and then bang, along came the pandemic, and he took the hard decision, no, I can't go now, I've got to stay, I've got to help steer through this global emergency and deal with it within Hampshire, is a mark of a man. A lot of people could have just slipped away and left it to others to deal with, but John didn't. He stood up, he got on with it, he grabbed it with both hands, and I think his handling has been excellent. Oh, if only the government had handled it as well as it's been handled in Hampshire. But, Chairman, I'd therefore like to say a massive thank you to John, not just for what he's done in the last twelve months, but what he's done as chief executive and before that as director of Children's Services. I think he was our first director of the merged Children's Services setup. So let me wish you a very long and happy and healthy retirement, John. I'm sure you've got lots of plans, and I'm sure you won't be sitting around doing nothing for very long. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Collett. councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. I too would like to wish John well as he approaches his retirement. I was privileged to see John in action as director of Children's Services, because I was chairing the committee at the time. And I'll never forget, on the day that he came back from Haringey, he came and gave us a presentation about what he had found, and he said one thing that really resonated with me, and it's a piece of advice which I pass on at every opportunity, and he said, "We make thousands of risk-based decisions every day, any one of which, if got wrong, could result in a tragedy." So there was no triumphalism about coming back from having done a job in Haringey, there was a very sober assessment of the importance of the work that is done by Children's Services Department, and I've never forgotten that. I've observed John being authoritative but courteous at all times, and I suspect a job made more difficult by having to deal with councillors. I have found that John commands respect of his fellow officers rather than demanding respect of his fellow officers, which means that the management team has worked well at all times under John's guidance. And it is noticeable, and this is a measure, when I go to the evenings which commemorate people who have given long service to the county council in the Great Hall, John has been getting louder cheers than the leader of the council. John's advice to the cabinet has been unfailingly sound and engendered a feeling that officers and members were working together, which is as it should be. I don't think for a moment that John's retirement will mean that John retires. I feel that there will be hundreds of opportunities for a person of John's calibre to carry on working for the public sector, and I'm sure that he will find worthwhile opportunities. But for now, I would like to be associated with the thanks that we are all giving to a servant of Hampshire and therefore everybody in Hampshire who has done a first-class job, and we're very grateful for it.
I don't see any other hands being... I don't see any other hands being... Oh, there's a hand down there. Oh, a couple of hands. Okay. Patricia, I'm not sure the camera can pick you up when you're seated, so you may have to stand when you talk, if that's all right, and bark at the microphone. But we are on webcast, it'll be nice for the people out there to see you.
Can you hear me? Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to everyone. I'm addressing these remarks to John, although I have to confess, he must be hiding somewhere because I can't see him. Hello, John. I know that the accolades and the good wishes that you receive today will be repeated many, many times before your final day as chief executive at the County Council. I can well remember your predecessor, Andrew Smith, and when he retired, I thought to myself, "Well, this new chap's got..." Because as chief executive, you have not followed, you have initiated. Over the years, you have enabled significant changes to be made to some in-house structures and processes. You planned for the continued and future success, and indeed, the financial viability of this council with the introduction of the Transformation Programme. And I well remember the significant role you played when the devolution scenario was being hotly debated. John, every member, every elected member in this improvised council chamber today has good reason to be extremely grateful for your hard work and dedication, not least myself. During my years on the Cabinet of the County Council, you were always available to give help. I must say, impeccable advice when sought. I am very grateful to you, John, and I'm sure that this council recognises just how indebted we are to you for your advice, your guidance, and your very professional support over the years. Thank you, John, so much.
Thank you, Patricia. Yes, councillor, would you like to stand, speak, announce yourself, et cetera?
Councillor Mark Cooper, Chairman. I would like to add my thanks to John Coughlin for his subvention to Hampshire County Council. He's combined the ability to promote the best of Hampshire County Council to the wider world and to lead the paid service with calm assurance. I will tell you today that John is a constituent of mine, and I'd like to thank him for not adding to my casework load whilst living in that Hampshire jewel, Romsey Town Division. Thank you, John, for your service to Romsey and to Hampshire County Council.
Thank you. Councillor Drew.
Thank you, Chairman, and may I offer my congratulations on your election as chairman to this council. Councillor David Drew speaking. I'd like to repeat a very brief message that I sent to John when I heard that he was to become the new chief executive. Dear John, I've always admired the way you handled matters relating to children's services, and I am certain that Hampshire County Council now remains in safe hands for the future. John, it's now your hands in your future, where safety will no doubt be assured. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hamby.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to say a few words that, working with John over the last few years, I've seen a different side, I think, to John. And Chairman, you mentioned earlier about the work that he's done nationally and recognised. I think from my point of view, it's the work that goes on behind the scenes. I said to John the other day, my family's been in Hampshire four hundred and fifty years, but in John, we've also had a Hampshire man. And quite often, that work that goes on behind the scenes, we don't all get to see, so we speak of colleagues round the country, and I know that he's always flown the flag for Hampshire, so all the residents and all of us have a lot to be very grateful for. So thank you, John.
Councillor Dowden.
Yes, first, before I speak about John, I would just like to congratulate the leader, Keith Mans, because I've always found Keith a fair-minded guy and always prepared to listen. And I welcome, obviously, you, Chairman. You haven't had a good year in regards, because of the Covid and Marge, obviously. Well, I only know it as Marge because being on the social care services. And I just hope that this next year will be a lot better for both of you. In regards of the John Coughlin, I've always found John helpful if I've needed to contact him where I perhaps was having difficulty with trying to solve problems, and I've gone directly to the top, and John has managed to sort things. I also can remember John as a very ordinary person and a family man. At Mountbatten School, I've attended music concerts, if you like, and also brass bands, and that's one of the... How can I say? Mountbatten School is really exceptional, and I know a pupil was... John had his child within that school and participated within those music festivals. And I can remember John as a chief executive when everybody was swaying and clapping and cheering and what, he was just an ordinary guy. And that's what I like about people, be yourself, doesn't matter whatever position you get into, just be yourself, but always remember to respect people. And John has always done that to me, and I'm sure he's done it to all councillors. And so I very much hope that you have a very good retirement, John, whatever field you go into, and I'm sure it'll be the voluntary groups somewhere along the line. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Any other members? Just before I ask John to stand up again, just one thing I should like to just add. We've concentrated quite a lot on John's skills in children's services in these, and rightly so, because, of course, he was excellent at that. John was also chief executive in charge of financial matters. When I was in the Cabinet handling financial matters, there would be times when we would have to make very difficult decisions, and the options placed before us were often those where we had to take the worst, least option. And I was forever grateful, therefore, for the guidance that I got from John Coughlin. So let us not pigeonhole him, he was an all-round exceptionally good chief executive. And now, John, I'd like you perhaps just to respond and say, if you will, to us.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman, and thank you, members. Goodness, if I'd known you felt like that, I think I'd reconsider the decision, but it's probably a bit late now. Although I would hotly dispute ever, ever being more loudly cheered than the leader of the council, that's not what an officer would ever want to do. This is a chamber where, even in this hotel, where officers should be seen but not heard, so I'm very grateful, Chairman, for you allowing me to say a few brief comments in response, just three or four very brief comments, if I may. Firstly, I really appreciate everything that's been said, but it is a tremendous privilege to be a member of staff in Hampshire County Council, and that's essentially what I am. Obviously, the greater the privilege, the greater the seniority, the greater the responsibility, and I hope I've lived up to the trust that's been put into me, which I hugely, hugely appreciate. So thank you very much indeed for allowing my career to progress here in the way that it has, I really appreciate it. The second thing I have to say, though, much as I appreciate all those kind comments, is very, very clearly, nothing I've been able to achieve in Hampshire has been single-handed. It's a fantastic workforce which you need to nurture, and in particular, I do think you're currently served genuinely, having been in senior management for well over twenty years in local government, by the best corporate management team I've ever come across. And particularly during Covid, their work has been outstanding for the County Council, and I really pay tribute to them and to my office, and of course, to Dara Ward, who's put up with me for quite a few years as well. The final thing I want to say properly is, I think in part a message for me to new members in this room for the first time, that I do think Hampshire's an outstanding organisation and does great things, but one of the secrets to Hampshire's success, in my humble opinion, is the culture, which I didn't help to create, but I hope I contributed to, of mutual respect between officers and members. There are different roles, different challenges, different dynamics at different times, but that culture holds sway here, and I think it's a tremendous asset to the people whom we are all paid or asked in different ways to serve, and long may that culture continue, if I may say so. So I won't say any more than that, other than to reiterate my thanks. Some people have mentioned my future plans, they're somewhat vague at the moment, although I have noticed, as others may have done recently, that in London, a retired chief executive at the last elections stood for election at the council, so I would like to announce here, I have no such intention. Thank you all very much indeed, members.
So now I revert to the Leader to round off item nine.
Thank you, Chairman, and I'd just like to say to John that I hope before he departs, or just before he departs, we'll have an opportunity more informally to have a suitable way of thanking him for all he's done for the county. I've just got a brief announcement to make, and that it is my intention that the title of Honorary Alderman be conferred on a number of past county councillors at a special meeting to be convened prior to the start of our full council meeting on the 22nd of July. After consultation with other group leaders, I propose the following former councillors to be honorary aldermen: Roy Perry, Peter Edgar, Chris Carter, and David Simpson. Thank you, Chair.
And that will be formally done at the next meeting of the council, notice having been given. There are no deputations, so I'll pass over item ten to item eleven, which is the item relating to questions, understanding order sixteen point one, point one. There are three questions to deal with. The first is from councillor Jackie Porter, and it goes to councillor Rob Hamby, who is the deputy leader and lead executive member for Economy, Transport and Environment. So councillor Porter, I think we can see you clearly sitting down, so that's all right. If you'd like to put your question, and then I'll ask councillor Hamby to answer.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on your re-election. Thank you. We know how the items are collected and separated at theberths, but what percentage of each of the materials collected curbside, i.e. paper, cardboard, plastic and glass, actually get reprocessed back into usable materials in Hampshire or even in England?
Councillor Hamby.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Porter for your question. And this question comes at a very appropriate time, as we are engaged in a full-scale review of recycling arrangements in Hampshire in response to the government's proposed changes to national policy and systems, and indeed, our own local priorities for driving up recycling and reducing waste and carbon emissions in Hampshire. Of the seventy-seven thousand tonnes of materials for dry-mixed recycling, which is collected at the curbside by the districts, annually sixty-two thousand tonnes, some eighty-one per cent is recycled. Recycling operations vary by material and clearly are dependent on the markets and the recycling capacity. At present, of the targeted DMR materials, only steel cans are currently processed in Hampshire. That accounts for about twenty-six per cent of the material collected. The remaining seventy-four per cent is recycled elsewhere in England. All collected plastic bottles and magazines, newspapers are also recycled in England. The majority of other materials are exported for recycling at present, with thirty-nine per cent of mixed paper, thirty-one per cent of aluminium cans, and only four per cent of cardboard being recycled in England. The remainder of these materials is currently exported, but I think really importantly, all our exported material is closely checked and monitored to ensure that it is genuinely recycled, and this is really important. We have never collected recycling material to chase targets. We only capture materials for which there is a genuine market and viable recycling options. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hamby. Councillor Porter, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please. When the public place items in their recycling bins, they think it will actually be recycled locally, and since writing my questions, the shocking pictures we saw in Turkey contrast with the environmental protection that I know we strive for in Hampshire and in the UK. As this council prepares that greener minerals and waste plan that we've just discussed, will the council be promoting the reprocessing of all types of waste, and in particular, plastic waste, to produce new materials right here in Hampshire as part of our green growth, not just allowing businesses to act as waste transfer stations as many do now?
Councillor Hamby.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think councillor Porter, as I've said in my first response, we are in the middle of a complete review, and part of that process, and when we get clearly defined, if you like, targets and processes from central government, all that will literally go into the pot so we can understand fully what we can achieve. The main thing is, we are all driving to reduce the amount of waste that we produce. So I'd be very happy to meet you on a further occasion, and we can discuss this and be involved in those considerations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Martin Todd to councillor Steve Foster, who is the executive member for Commercial Strategy Estates and Property. Councillor Todd, I think we can see you sitting down, so you're all right.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations also for your re-election. How much has Hampshire County Council reduced its carbon emissions by since 2017, and what have been the main components of that reduction?
Councillor Foster, where are you? There.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Todd for the question. As reported to the executive member Commercial Strategy, Performance and Human Resources back in October 2020, the council reduced its carbon emissions by four thousand seven hundred and seventy tonnes between 2017 and 2020, which was the last point of measurement. The scope and the measurement for that was limited to corporate buildings' energy use, street lighting, and officer travel. This was based upon the greenhouse gas emissions reporting required to government for about the last ten years or so. As reported to Cabinet in February of this year, the scope of emissions has now been extended to include schools, the rural estate, and indirect emissions from throughout the supply chain. Reductions in carbon emissions will now need to be calculated against this new baseline from this year onwards. Recent decisions by the council to purchase green electricity for all council corporate buildings and the successful grant award for decarbonisation projects on our buildings, such as the huge investment in school solar, et cetera, will assist in making a positive start to the council's longer-term commitment to achieve net carbon zero by 2050. It's clear this will be a major challenge, and a long-term approach with collaboration is required, which will include engagement with suppliers and contractors.
Thank you. Councillor Todd, do you have a supplementary question?
Is the reduction that you've just cited consistent with the forty per cent claimed in Conservative leaflets during the recent campaign? If it is, why do we still... If it is possible to achieve forty per cent reduction in four years, why do we still have such an unambitious 2050 target? why do we still have such an unambitious 2050 target to get to net zero, much slower than every other authority in Hampshire that has declared a climate emergency? And if it isn't consistent with that 40%, was the 40% claim done out of embarrassment at the slow progress that's being made? Or is there another reason? Does it indicate that perhaps, deep down, they know that they need to set a more ambitious target than 2050?
Thank you, Chair. The targets that were set are very ambitious indeed. And over the last 10 years or so, the council has achieved some absolutely significant savings. I'm more than happy if councillor Todd would like to confirm the exact details of what he wants, to provide a detailed answer in writing. But what I would say is that the council ambition is challenging. It isn't just about reducing the council's figures, which account for less than 2% of overall Hampshire emissions. It's about showing reductions right the way across the county council. We have to play our part and show leadership. And I think it's really important that all members and all political groups should work together and collaborate to achieve the maximum that we can and actually achieve those reductions as soon as we can.
Sorry, the last question is from councillor Jackie Porter to councillor Roz Chad, who is the executive member for Children's Services. Councillor Porter?
Thank you, Chairman. Can the county council say how many preschool places have been lost during the last year, please?
Councillor Chad?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Porter for your question. Hampshire's early years childcare market is made up of nurseries, schools, preschools and childminders, with just with over 33,000 childcare places offered by over 1,000 providers across Hampshire at the 1st of April 2021. During the last 12 months, there has been a net loss of 97 providers and 436 childcare places, which represents an overall 1.2% reduction in the available places. With regards to preschools, there has been a reduction of 293 places across Hampshire preschools in the past 12 months. However, there has been a growth in the nursery sector with three additional nurseries operating compared to last year. This has mitigated some of the reductions in the preschool and childminder places. Support to this sector is in place through business surgeries supporting financial and business planning, sustainability grants to support short-term funding issues and a broad training and development offer. The market is closely monitored to enable us to adapt our support in order to maintain the significance of childcare places in Hampshire.
Thank you. Councillor Porter, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you. Does the executive member have any concerns that childcare sufficiency in nurseries is actually not necessarily affordable, particularly as the number of vulnerable two-year-olds inevitably increases following the pandemic?
Thank you, councillor Porter. I think preschool provision and nursery provision is something that both you and I are very keen to look into and to support families to have places for their children. And I would really like to invite you to meet with me so we can discuss this further and get the support that our families need for them to be able to go to work and have good childcare for their children.
Thank you. Now, the agenda is split into two sections from here on. There's Part One items which are for decision. And then later there are Part Two items, where no decision is required. But for noting, during the Part One items, we will need to vote or need to indicate agreement. And I will ask you at that time to vote and to indicate that by putting your hand up quite clearly. If it becomes a tight vote, then I may have to ask Members to stand so that we can count. But I am anticipating none of that for the moment. So item 12, proportionality and appointments. An updated report has been circulated to all of you, but I ask the Leader now to introduce this.
Thank you, Chairman. The report that you have in front of you, there are no changes. It is as it is in the papers. And I would recommend it to you for approval.
Right, do any members wish to speak on this item? Or shall I move straight to the recommendations? The member over there wishes to speak. I'm sorry, I don't. Can't see you with the mask and the colour behind you and so on. It's councillor Parker Jones.
Hello, my name is Luke Heltsler Parker Jones. The only thing I wanted to mention on this, and I do hope it's all right, is that I'm an independent member and I am hugely concerned about the environment. And I've been so impressed listening to everything that's going to happen. And I was really pleased that people are saying that they want to work cross-group. And I was highly disappointed that there isn't enough committee places for me to actually sit on anything that would be discussing the environment. So even though I'm not on any of those committees, I just want to say that as an independent person, I am reaching out to say whoever would like to work with me in helping us to achieve carbon neutrality, I am more than happy to work with. And I particularly would like to work with councillor Warwick to see if there is anything that I can do to assist. And I know I can't be on the committees, but I would like to lodge that I would have loved to have been. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much and welcome. I'm going to ask the Leader to respond to you.
Congratulations on being elected to the council. I'm certain if you would like to get involved in environmental matters, we'll be able to sort something out for you. You can certainly volunteer for certain items at certain committees. And I'll certainly look into that with councillor Warwick to see how we can accommodate that.
Anyone else? Right, so I'm going to ask you to approve the recommendations from page 22, which goes from paragraph A right through to paragraph G, but take them all on block. Do you agree those recommendations? There is... Are there any dissenters? Anyone against? Oh, that's fine. Move on to item 13, constitutional matters. I'm sorry, did councillor Cooper wish to speak? Somebody saying councillor Cooper? No, no, false alarm. Back to item 13 then, which is the constitutional matter, the appointment of a scrutiny officer. And this is a report from the chief executive, which will be introduced by the Leader, councillor Keith Mans.
Thank you, Chairman. The report and the appointment of the scrutiny officer and other constitutional matters are as they appear on the papers you have in front of you. There are no changes, and therefore I recommend them to councillors.
Right, is there any questions or debate on this item? Don't see anyone indicating. So shall I move to the recommendations, which are on page 24? The recommendations are as in paragraph A, B and C. And I seek your agreement to those recommendations. Please indicate. Any against? An against? Let's carry it. Now we come to the Part Two items. As far as I can recall, we only have one Part Two item. There were no... Which is item 14 on the agenda. There were no HWFRA questions, so we go straight to the report. Paragraph 14B. And that report is to be given by the vice-chairman of the authority, councillor Roz Chad.
Thank you, Chairman. Really pleased to present this Part Two report to the council and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. That report is for noting. There being no comment on it. That item on the agenda is then concluded, which brings us to the end of this meeting. And I thank you all for your indulgence, patience and good humour. And wish you all a safe journey home. Please don't forget to put your masks back on as you leave in order not to infect me. Bye.